Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Baker. Counselor Ciomo. Counselor Conley. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Ross. And Counselor Yancy.
We do have a quorum, Mr. President.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I have the distinct pleasure to introduce my friend and colleague, City Councilor Bill Linehan, who will introduce the very Reverend Jep Straight of the Cathedral Church of St. Paul Episcopal of Boston. Please give Counselor Linehan your attention. And after the Reverend finishes the invocation, Counselor Linehan will lead us in a salute to the flag. City Councilor Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce someone who's very important to the city of Boston and to the Episcopalian Church throughout eastern Massachusetts. He's the dean of the Cathedral of St. Paul, which is the church that we all see directly across from Park Street Station, right in the Boston Carmen, which is in my district. He's been a priest for over 30 years and who has been at St. Paul's for over 18 years. So it's with honor that I get to introduce him to all of you.
Thank you very much. Before I offer a prayer, I just want to say I've brought you each a present. This is on one side, a picture of the new art we've had installed in our unfinished pediment, which was originally built in 1820 and has gone unfinished since this year. The back is the explanation of the religious symbolism of this nautilus. And I like to think we've done our part for making that part of Boston a little more beautiful. But I particularly want to mention because so often people complain about bureaucratic snafus in the city and how hard it is to get things done. And I just want to give a shout out to the people who helped us make this happen. We've gotten consistent support from Tony Pollak, the Parks Commissioner, from Ellen Lipsy, the Landmarks Commission, Karen Goodfellow, who's the mayor's representative for art. And they just were very supportive and helpful in the process. And I just am grateful for that kind of public-private partnership. And I want to mention that. Thank you so much. Okay, let us pray. Gracious God, we gather to do the city's business and we're mindful of the example of the unassuming and faithful service of former Governor Salucci. We lift him up and give thanks for his life and dedication. We're grateful for his example. I'm also mindful of the reality of the approaching mayoral transition that ripples out in all kinds of ways here in this council and throughout the city. I pray that you be with all the people as we discern new leadership. I pray in gratitude for the leadership of the council during this time. I pray that members continue to be empowered by God for their work, to be helped by God in discernment, and that somehow in their work, they're able to feel God's gratitude for their example and for their dedication. And now may the blessing of God, the eternal goodwill of God, the shalom and salam of God, the wildness and warmth of God be upon you this day and always. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean Straight, for your inspiring message. Please join us as Counselor Linehan leads us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic whose extent, foundation, and its ground is visible for the review of justice.
Counselor Linehan will escort clergy from the podium. I'd ask Madam Clerk to amend the attendance record to include Counselors Presley and Conley, who have joined us, and Counselor Arroyo, who have joined us since the taking. Since there are no presentations today, the chair moves approval of the minutes of last week's meeting, seeing and hearing. No objection, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor. For us two together, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0986, message in order to reduce the appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $126,030 to provide funding for the Boston Public Health Commission for the FY13 salary increase contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and local 888 SEIU program coordinator and counselor's unit. Docket number 0987, message in order approving a supplemental appropriation of $126,030 for the Boston Public Health Commission to cover FY13 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and local 888 SEIU programs coordinators and counselors unit, filed in the office of the city clerk June 7, 2013.
Chair recognizes City Council Mike Ciomo on dockets 986 and 987.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask suspension and passage of dockets 0986 and 0987, another collective bargaining agreement consistent with all the past collective bargaining agreements that we've had. We've held six hearings since April. Again, all of these have the same provisions. I would just like to point out that approximately 78 counselors are part of this collective bargaining unit. All entry-level workers in the Boston Public Health Department's homeless shelters and programs. Approximately 73 coordinators are the line supervisors in the Public Health Commission's homeless shelter. They supervise the counselors or provide social services like housing referrals, et cetera. And approximately 175 program staff, diverse array of public health employees, including administrative staff, outreach staff, program coordinators, health inspectors, social workers, custodians, and supervisors. Monies will be taken from the FY13 collective bargaining reserve, which has a current balance of $16.37 million. Again, the same increases, 012333, for a total of six years, contractually agreed to. Once again, I put it before the body for passage.
Counselor Ciomo is moving suspension of the rules and passage of dockets 0986 and 0987. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Dockets 0986 and 0987 have passed.
Docket number 0988, message in order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept, and expend FY13 Community Development Block Grants, Home Investment Partnerships Program, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS and Emergency Solutions Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Docket 0988 will be referred to Committee on Housing.
Mr. President, would you like me to read all the public statements?
Sure.
Docket number 0989, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the FY14 State 911 Department PSAP and Regional Emergency Communications Center Support and Initiative Grant Program Funds in the amount of $2,708,334 awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security State 911 Department. Docket number 0990, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the FY14 911 Department Training Grant Funds in the amount of $660,262,000 awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security State 911 Department. And docket number 0991, message in order authorizing the Boston Police Department to accept and expend the grants to encourage arrest policies and enforcement of protection orders, grant funds awarded by the United States Department of Justice, the Office of Violence Against Women for the Boston Multiple Disciplines Advocates and Supports Project in the amount of $650,000. Docket number 0992, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand a grant in the amount of $311,809 from the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs. The funding is for the FY2013 Forensic DNA Backlog Reduction Program.
Docket 0989, 0990, 0991, and 0992 will be referred to Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 0993, message in order approving a supplemental appropriation of $6 million for the Boston Public Schools to cover the FY13 cost of providing services to meet the needs of a growing number of students with disabilities. These services include Applied Behavioral Analysis, known as ABA, services for students with disability, filed in the office of the city clerk June 10, 2013.
0993 will be referred to Committee on Education.
And then I'll read the next five.
Docket number 0994, message in order approving the compensating balance agreement by and between the city and Citizens Bank for the provision of lockbox services for the collection of real estate, personal property, motor vehicle excise, and boat excise tax services. Docket number 0995, message in order approving the compensating balancing agreement by and between the city and the Citizens Bank for the provision of direct deposit account services. Docket number 0996, message in order approving the compensating balance agreement by and between the city and Citizens Bank for the provision of credit/debit card banking services. And docket number 0997, message in order approving the compensating balancing agreement by and between the city and Citizens Bank for the provision of banking services.
Docket 0994 through 0997 will be referred to Committee on Ways and Means. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0998, communication was received from President Murphy regarding a change to the June 12 Boston City Council meeting schedule.
That will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0979, order that the council continue to hold hearings on the FY14 recommended budget.
Docket 0979 remains, as does the budget in the Committee on Ways and Means, as do all of you.
I will read all those. Thank you. Docket number 0670, message in order authorizing the public schools to reestablish in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to $1,800,000 to support the maintenance and repair of Boston Public School facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Docket number 0671, message in order authorizing public schools to reestablish in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to $1,500,000 to repair and purchase Boston Public Schools computers, technology, including computer, mobile devices, and instructional software. Docket number 0672, message in order authorizing the Police Licensing Division to reestablish in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to $350,000 for new hackneyed driver applicants. Docket number 0673, message in order authorizing the Mayor's Office of Tourism and Special Events to reestablish in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $300,000 to purchase goods and services to support cultural, artistic, and community events throughout the city of Boston. Docket number 0674, message in order authorizing the Boston Police Academy to reestablish in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to $200,000 for offices from non-city-of-Boston law enforcement agency, police officer training purposes. Docket number 0675, message in order authorizing the Boston Fire Academy to reestablish in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $200,000 to support training programs for firefighters from non-city-of-Boston agencies. Docket number 0676, message in order authorizing the Fire Department Academy to reestablish in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $200,000 to support training programs for firefighters for non-city-of-Boston fire agencies. Docket number 0676, message in order authorizing the Fire Department to reestablish in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $150,000 to support Massachusetts Oil and Hazardous Material Release Prevention and Response Act. Docket number 0677, message in order authorizing public schools to reestablish in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from the fund up to a maximum of $125,000 for transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs. Docket number 0678, message in order authorizing the Police Department Special Operations Division to reestablish in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from that fund up to a maximum of $100,000 to support the K-9 Unit's training program for officers and police dogs from non-city-of-Boston law enforcement agencies. Docket number 0679, message in order authorizing the Fire Department Academy to reestablish in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, a revolving fund to accept from that fund up to a maximum of $20,000 to support Massachusetts Oil and Hazardous Material Release and Prevention Response Act.
Docket 0979 remains in Committee on Ways and Means, as does docket 0670 through 0679. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0999, Counselor Ross offered the following order for hearing regarding N-Star infrastructure improvements.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Mike Ross on docket 0999.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this isn't a matter just that relates to the Back Bay. This relates to our entire city. You know, as we build above ground, we have to pay attention to what's happening below ground, too. And this is now the third time in 15 months that there's been a power outage in the Back Bay. In fact, I was at the site on Dalton Street, and a trolley drove by. And I actually heard the trolley tour driver tell the people on the bus that this is the place where the power goes out every few years. I mean, literally. And it's not a laughing matter. This is a... Storo Drive was brought to a standstill. The Mass. Turnpike was shut down. It's getting to be where we are starting to get used to, power outages. This in the Back Bay. This after just two months ago, that neighborhood was shut down for nine days for far more horrible and insidious reasons. You know, this is not acceptable. It's not acceptable in a major city. It's not acceptable in a neighborhood. It's not acceptable in the Back Bay or Alston or South End or any of the places where this continues to happen. And we need to hold N-Star accountable. God knows we're held accountable when this happens. They need to be held accountable, too. And so they put out an order for... I'm sorry, they put out a report one year ago. They began the work on a transformer that they're still doing work on right now, a year later. And I think they have some explaining to do. And I'd like to bring them back here into the city council and ask them in front of the public what it is that they are doing in that substation. But obviously, there's a far more important conversation here that has to do with how we use energy, how we distribute energy, how to smarter use our grid, how to use the latest technologies and sustainabilities. Those are what we need to do as a city and as a community. And that I do not lay exclusively on N-Star. But they need to be a partner. And they need to be driving this conversation. So we'll have that conversation, too. I hope my colleagues will join me. I think it's an important matter. And I'd like to bring them back over here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Please add my name. Please also add the name of Counselor Yancy, Counselor Presley, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Ciomo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Arroyo. The matter will be referred to Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Docket 1000, Madam Clerk.
Docket 1000, Counselors Ross and Presley offered the following order for hearing regarding the creation of empowerment liquor licenses in the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes Counselor Mike Ross. I believe you want to suspend Rule 12 to add the name of Counselor Jackson.
Mr. President, may I suspend Rule 12 to add the name of Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Ross is making a motion to suspend Rule 12. It needs a second. Counselor O'Malley and Presley second it. All those in favor of suspending Rule 12, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Rule 12 is suspended. Counselor Jackson is added as a co-sponsor to docket 01000. Chair recognizes Counselor Ross.
Mr. President, last meeting, Counselor Jackson spoke about creating restaurants, liquor licenses in Dudley. Previous to that, Counselor Presley has shown tremendous leadership, writing an op-ed in Commonwealth Magazine, speaking about this issue endlessly to us and has led on this issue of adding liquor licenses, restaurant licenses, to our city. I believe the word she used is she's not trying to create, turn Main Street into Bourbon Street, but trying to bring commercial viability to our neighborhoods. I represent Mission Hill. And I remember when Mission Hill opened up its first premier restaurant that many of you have gone to, the Mission Bar &amp; Grill. And those windows that open up into the outside world and let light and air and people's views in. And it changed something in that neighborhood. It made people say that Mission Hill is a place that is inviting us over, wants us to come by and have dinner. And it employs dozens of people. And it keeps the lights on late until the evening, right? Until long after midnight. There's still street activity right in that area of Mission Hill. And it really did change that corner. And I just can't help but think that it's fair that there's anywhere in the city of Boston where there isn't that same vitality and liveliness, that whole neighborhoods are without a single restaurant to bring your families or to go out on a date or to work a second job like many of us used to. I know a bunch of us worked in the restaurant industry. I used to bartend. Before that, I worked in the kitchen. You know, restaurants bring a lot of activity and vitality to our communities. And it's not fair that they're not in every neighborhood. And it wouldn't be hard at all for us to create empowerment licenses. It's a home rule petition. You know, there's 1,241 liquor licenses in Boston. The neighborhood of Matapan has nine. And those aren't restaurants. Those aren't all restaurants. Some of them are just bars, and some of them aren't even open. Right? So creating empowerment licenses for the purposes of establishing restaurants, maybe even giving them away. But creating opportunities for every neighborhood to have that type of vitality. Why can't we do that? Why can't we do that right now? And so that's what I'm looking to do. I'm looking to do it with all my colleagues, to build on the great work that Counselor Presley and Counselor Jackson have already put out there, to do it across the city. We'll call them empowerment licenses. And we'll bring them into our neighborhoods. And we'll bring people into our neighborhoods. We'll bring jobs into our neighborhoods. We'll bring vitality into our neighborhoods. I hope it's something we can all do together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Chair recognizes Counsel Diana Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't speak for too long because I've already spoken ad nauseam about this issue. But I did want to thank Counselor Ross for inviting me to partner with him on this. And I did just want to raise a couple of issues that previously I've not raised in the chamber about this. President Murphy, some months ago, acknowledged the fact that we really need to have a commitment to invest in workforce housing. Wherever we see that there is a transit boom, we know that we will also see a housing boom. My recent meeting with Secretary Byleke enlightened me to the fact that with that housing boom, what we're seeing a market demand for, and I live in such a development, is a multi-use development. And so what is happening is that the ground is being turned up to begin to build these developments that are giving the market what they want, multi-income, multi-use, like the building I live in in Dorchester that has Tavolo Restaurant on the first floor. And what is happening is that those developments are bottlenecked because they cannot get a liquor license for that restaurant. And that is the very thing that is incentivizing so many people to want to live in that development. So this really does have a ripple effect. The other point, two points quickly I wanted to make is that we talk a lot about job creation. And it's prudent upon us, incumbent upon us, rather, to be talking about the need to create more Cory-friendly jobs. And the culinary arts has been one of the most successful vehicles to create Cory-friendly jobs. And then finally, I do believe in the power of restaurants to transform neighborhood by giving a place to build community. This is not just about the economic engine and the fact that they create jobs, but they build and foster community. And I've seen that evidence in the wake of the Boston Marathon, where community repeatedly came together was Tavolo, just to be in the company of one another into commune, into fellowship. And so in the coming weeks, I'll actually be partnering with future Boston on a transformative restaurant award. I'll be telling you all more about that. And I hope in your respective... I'll be telling you all more about that, and I hope in your respective district you'll partner with me in that to nominate restaurants who have not only been economic anchors, but have really transformed the neighborhood by building and fostering communities. So I thank Counselor Ross for his leadership on this. I thank him for the invitation to partner, and stay tuned. I have a feeling there'll be much more conversation about this very issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Chair recognizes Counselor Frank Baker.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the maker and your co-sponsors also. Having had my own restaurant, designed those windows, put those windows in myself, did the work to get a beer and wine license to have it subsequently, after I sold the restaurant two years later, get sold from my space that I saw in the neighborhood that I grew up in. Now it's in one of the more downtown neighborhoods, or one of the hotter neighborhoods. So I just want to thank you for your leadership on this and let people know that in Dorchester, this will help us. We need some help along Dorchester Avenue. Any help, anybody can provide for us. Thank you very much, and I'd like to sign on to that.
Please add the name of Counselor Frank Baker. Please also add the name of Counselor Moxiomo. Chair recognizes Counselor Salvatore Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nice to be recognized this week. I would like to first commend the makers.
Oh, I thought you were finished, Counselor.
No, I'm not. I'm not finished. You know, this is, it's an important resolution. I see what happened in East Boston, where we have restaurants that did not have beer and wine licenses, and I see them go out of business. And I've also seen in Eagle Hill and Jeffrey's Point, where, I think it was five years ago, we had those special licenses that we finally, that one-time special licenses, and we saw a license go to Eagle Hill, Angela's Cafe. I think many of you have been there, and one that went to Jeffrey's Point. And what a difference it makes to the neighborhood, because now the restaurant's open to 10 o'clock at nighttime. And guess what? There's people walking around the neighborhoods. So it's really made those two neighborhoods safe. And I still get very, very upset that I don't understand why today that we still have to go begging to the state to get licenses for our city. So I think that's something that we need to work on, that we should control our own beer and wine licenses in the city. So I am proudly going to sign my name.
Please add the name of Counselor Sal Lamatina. Counselor, Chair recognizes Counselor Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I commend the makers as well, and say, for me, it's an issue of economic justice. There's so much disparity that continues in our city for so many decades. So it's astounding. If you look at the demographic makeup of the owners of these licenses, to see that very, very few are owned by people who live in Dorchester, Mattapan, or Roxbury. And that's not fair. Last year, one of my constituents had a misfortune of getting ill, and he delegated the responsibility to renew his license to someone who wasn't all that reliable, didn't get down to City Hall in time, lost his license that he had for more than a decade, and that license is now downtown Boston, one of the few licenses that we had in Mattapan. So, you know, those mishaps happens, but I just can't believe that in 2013, we're still talking about issues like this. So I, again, commend the makers, like to have my name added, and looking forward to having every area of the City of Boston to be vibrant and exciting and inviting. And this is just one small step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Linehan.
...week on the same matter, I want to commend the author and the co-sponsor. I've seen firsthand how effective these beer and wine licenses or liquor licenses can be to the revitalization of certain areas in my district, and it's absolutely amazing. And all the time that we waited for something to happen on the South Boston waterfront, it was those liquor licenses and those restaurants that kept people there after 5 o'clock. And then they said to themselves, geez, it'd be great to live here. And then they did, even before the places were built on the waterfront. So it's beyond belief, one, that there is the inequities, because there is, and that every neighborhood deserves to have a great hospitality district and an entertainment district that represents the culture and the food and all that sort of stuff. And it's archaic that we're still dealing with a state licensing board. So anything we can do to keep this going this year and the years until we finally get control of this ourselves, I'm all in support of. Thank you.
Do you want to have your name added, Counselor Linehan?
No, of course.
Please add the name of Counselor Linehan. Please also add the name of Counselor Yancey. Please also add the name of Counselor Matt O'Malley. Please add, Madam Clerk, please add my name. The matter, docket number 1000. Counselor John Conley, please add his name. Docket number 1000 will be referred to the Committee on Economic Development. Motions?
Counselor Roy.
Counselor Arroyo, please add the name of Counselor Felix Arroyo. And docket 1000 will be referred to Committee on Economic Development. Personnel orders.
Docket number 1001, Counselor Murphy for Counselor Ross.
Counselor Ross moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1001. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1001 has passed.
Docket number 1002, Counselor Murphy for Counselor Yancey.
Counselor Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1002. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1002 has passed.
Docket 1003, Counselor Murphy for Counselor Yancey.
Counselor Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1003. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1003 has passed.
Docket number 1004, Counselor Murphy for Counselor Yancey.
Counselor Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1004. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1004 has passed. Clerk informs me there is one late-file matter in her hands, which in absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matter is so added. The clerk will read the addition to the agenda.
Counselor Murphy ordered that effective June 1st, 2013, the following named person be hereby...
Counselor Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and passage of the late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Late file has passed. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Chair recognizes Counselor John Conley.
I think I pressed that a while ago, Mr. President. That was to sign on.
To sign on. All right, there are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. Counselor Lamatina, you want to speak on one of the consent agenda items?
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Madam Clerk, please read the late file of Counselor Lamatina.
City of Boston and the City Council, Resolution of Counselor Salvatore Lamatina. Whereas our city's identity is defined by its promise of equality, esteem for diversity, and commitment to innovation, and we have prospered because of the contribution of hard-working, aspiring citizens. And whereas we believe in the human dignity of all Bostonians, regardless of immigration status, and recognize the importance of immigrants, many contributions to the social and economic fabric of the City of Boston. Whereas America's current immigration system is dysfunctional, harms our economy, and does not reflect our Boston or national values, and the federal government's inability... excuse me, to enact immigration reform, has created several economic, cultural, and political strains here and across America. Whereas becoming a citizen in the United States means taking a solemn oath to uphold our nation's constitution, and is an important symbol of full membership and participation in society that should be encouraged, not barred. And whereas comprehensive immigration reform must include a realistic pathway to citizenship for all hard-working, tax-paying, aspiring citizens who live in the U.S. if they meet reasonable requirements. And whereas keeping families together not only is the right thing to do, but is also good for the economy because families provide a base of support that increases productivity and spurs entrepreneurship. Whereas immigration is a federal responsibility, and a comprehensive approach to solve our broken immigration system would strengthen our cities and nations' economies and frees aspiring citizens to make an even greater contribution to our communities. And whereas comprehensive immigration reform must update the legal immigration system that future flow of immigrant workers more realistically matches our nation's labor needs and is structured to protect the wages... thank you so much, I'm sorry. Thank you. ...citizens to make even greater contribution to our economies. Whereas comprehensive immigration reform must update the legal immigration system that future flow of immigrant workers more realistically matches our nation's labor needs and is structured to protect the wages and working conditions of U.S. and immigrant workers while providing for strict compliance with U.S. labor standards. And whereas the city supports a comprehensive immigration reform bill that keeps families together, upholding our values as a nation promotes economic growth, and provides a long-term solution to the immigration system. And whereas our elected officials must create an immigration process that strengthens our nation's economy and lets aspiring citizens continue their contribution to our communities, therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council urges the 113th Congress to enact comprehensive immigration reform as outlined in this resolution that addresses earned legalization with a path to citizenship and updated policy towards future immigration of families and workers. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the U.S. Speaker of the House, President of the U.S. Senate, members of Massachusetts Congressional delegation, the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Speaker of the State House of Representatives, the President of the State Senate, and members of the Massachusetts Legislature, filed in the City Council June 12, 2013.
Speaking on the matter, Chair recognizes Counselor Sal Lamatina.
Madam Clerk, thank you for reading that.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, as you know, yesterday, the United States Senate finally, finally passed an immigration bill that will hopefully legalize 11 million undocumented immigrants. This is the first immigration bill, believe it or not, since 1987, when President Ronald Reagan signed immigration law that legalized 3 million people. Some of the details of the bills include border security, pass the citizenship, visas for highly skilled workers, visas for low-skilled workers, and family immigration and employment verification. I know that immigration is the federal government's responsibility, but in our City of Boston, there are thousands and thousands of undocumented immigrants that are waiting to become citizens. And my neighborhood, East Boston, which has been a gateway for immigrants for many, many years, signed with the Jewish people, the Irish, the Italians, and now we have the new Colombians and eastern, I'm sorry, Colombians, El Salvadorians, Middle Easterns, Mexicans, and Norwegians. And I could tell you, in East Boston, thank God for these new immigrants to my neighborhood. 20 years ago, I remember when there were vacant storefronts in East Boston. And now we have, my neighborhood is just booming because of the businesses from the But there are families in East Boston that we really need to help, and it's true. When you have a father that's here legally, right, and the mother is undocumented, and the children were born here, and guess what? For that poor family to stay together, the mother would have to go back to Colombia and stay there for seven years before she could come back here and be a citizen. And that's just, it's not right. It's not right. We have a lot of college students from all over the world that come to the United States to get a good education, you know, and after they get their education, they go back to their countries. Imagine if we keep those people here? It would really help our country. So I'm asking today that you sign on with this resolution, that we pass this resolution, because I think this is very important for many, many citizens, hopefully new citizens to our city. Just recently, I went to a ceremony at the East Boston Health Center where new immigrants were sworn in as citizens, they got a citizenship, and they were so happy, and it was, they were so proud to become American citizens. So hopefully, we'll be able to do this for 11 million undocumented immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Chair recognizes Counselor Felix Arroyo.
I just want to thank the maker for offering this, and in fact, I'm thrilled that he offered this, and very proudly would like to add my name to this resolution. You know, our country's history, in fact, what makes our country unique than, different than most any other country in the world, is that the vast majority of us can trace our lineage to another land. The vast majority of us are not native to this land, and that makes us unique in this world. It's that uniqueness that has brought the diversity that we have in this country, and I believe it is that diversity that has made us such a strong and really the country we're all proud to live in, proud to call home, and we're all proud to be Americans. But it's that history, that true history of what makes this country, that has made us different, and I believe made us special. I think every now and then, some people forget that history of this country. And so I'm so very grateful to have a colleague of mine file this, and so grateful to sign on. All of us here as elected officials have the role, a role to play, a role to play in making our city a better city, but yes, a role to play in making our country a better country. And we could play that role by speaking the true history of our country. Our country depends on immigration, always has. It's new immigrants that allow us to have this new lifeblood that we have. It's our workforce, it's our innovators. It's the, as you said, it's that mom-and-pop store that once was vacant, but now is creating a bustling Maverick Square in East Boston. And so I'm grateful to sign on, and I hope all my colleagues will as well. And I was so proud to watch the Senate do, the United States Senate do what they did, and it'd be a very good day when we get to a comprehensive immigration reform that puts families first and in fact treats all human beings like what they are, human beings who deserve respect and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Please add the name of Counselor Felix Arroyo. Please also add the name of Counselor Charles Yancey, Counselor Mike Ross, Counselor Ayanna Presley, Counselor Moxiomo, Counselor John Conley, Counselor Bill Linehan, Counselor Matt O'Malley, Counselor Frank Baker, Counselor Rob Salvo, and please also add my name, Madam Clerk. Counselor Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and adoption of the late-file resolution. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. The matter is adopted. Madam Clerk, please read the second late-file matter. Madam Clerk, please read the second late-file matter in the consent agenda.
The City of Boston and City Council, in tribute, the Boston City Council extends its deepest sympathies to you and your family in the passing of your loved one, Bernard J.
It's a late file, Bernie Kelly. Okay, we're going to close in memory now, so I'd ask all to rise, and all guests to please rise at this point, as the council peers to adjourn. Counsel Yancey, excuse me, Madam Clerk, could you please correct the record and indicate that Counsel Yancey supported dockets 0986 and 0987 when they came through?
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
For this week's meeting, for all members of the City Council, the City Council will adjourn in memory of former Governor Argeo Paul Salucci, for Counsel Presley, Madison Hart, for Counsel Royo, Nancy Ob Gleason, for Counsel Connelly, Frances Frank McCarthy, for Counsel Lamatina, Claire M. Dimakko De Michelle. So, for all of the aforementioned, counsel will close in their memory, and for Bernie Kelly, for Counsel Lamatina, the late file. So, if we could have a moment of silence for the aforementioned. When the council adjourns today's meeting, Wednesday, June 12, it will do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and is scheduled to meet again next Wednesday, June 19, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. The council stands adjourned.